I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, October 27th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We're meeting in the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. For, just for the record, I'd like to go through the Planning Board to a roll call vote. I'm sorry, not a good vote, but just for attendance.
Michelle McEwen.
Mark Knox, present.
Peter Conroy, present.
Nora Klein, present.
So the first item on our agenda. The Lakeville Planning Board will hold public hearings pursuant to the Town of Lakeville's zoning bylaw and Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, October 27th, at 7:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the proposed amendments to the Lakeville zoning bylaws as follows. I'm going to lean on counsel for this one. This is actually noted at 7:05, public hearing number one. So do I need to wait?
You do. Do you have minutes or something you can do?
Yep.
Do that.
So before I open the first public hearing, because it's actually posted on our agenda for 7:05, we're just going to go through a little bit of board business. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes for Thursday, September 8th, 2022? Did anybody have any comments or?
They look good.
I have a motion in a second, so all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes for the Thursday, September 8th, 2022 Planning Board meeting are approved. For the record, we have a site plan review for 156 Rhode Island Road, which has been continued from previous meetings. I have a memo from the applicant requesting a continuance again to our December 8th meeting is what's their request. So if I could get a motion to do that?
So moved?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion in a second to continue the 156 Rhode Island Road site plan review until December 8th at 7:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. It's two minutes. I'll make the announcement that the Planning Board's next meeting will be on November 10th at 7:00 PM here at the Lakeville Police Station. Unfortunately, I don't think three minutes is enough to squeeze in. 3:10, 10:12, so we'll hold off on that one. So if everybody would just stand by for just another minute, we will open the first hearing. All right, being that it is 7:05, I move to open the first public hearing. The article would amend Section 7.4 to create the position of an associate planning board member as authorized by General Law Chapter 40A, Section 9. And I'm going to leave it as that's the motion to open the hearing. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is open. So this change would add the language to 7.4.4.1, Planning Board Associate Member. There should be one associate member recommended by the Planning Board and appointed annually by the Select Board for a one-year term. The Chair may designate the associate member to sit on the Board for purposes of acting on special permit applications in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member of the Planning Board or in the event of a vacancy on the Board. So that would be the addition to the bylaws. Is there any discussion from Planning Board members on this one?
No, I'll just say that, you know.
Come on, we have five minutes.
I'll just say, you know, I have concern that it's going to be, you know, an appointed rather than elected position that could potentially vote on a special permit.
Thank you. Nora, you had some comments originally about the use of that.
Yeah, we had this on the ZBA.
Yeah.
And it came in quite handy because of zoning board appeal members having to reclusive themselves from decisions.
Whether they were butters or had some?
Butters or they were associated with contracting on the property. So it came in quite handy to be able to have that. And, you know, the terms are shorter on ZBA than they are here. It was still pretty much the same thing, one year. And we never ran into a conflict where someone thought they could automatically then run and have the up and up over someone else running. So I'm in total agreement because there's not a lot of instances we've had where somebody's had to reclusive themselves. But I think we want to avoid that if possible.
And again, this is really for special permits, which the Planning Board doesn't have a whole lot of. So the Planning Board needs to make a recommendation on town meeting floor on this. Would anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that the Planning Board approves it unanimously and is ready for a town meeting.
Well, we'll have to take the vote towards unanimous, but no.
It seemed like it was about to be.
So motion for approval from Peter, can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll just say no.
Okay, so motion carries with a majority. Michelle voted no. A minute or two before 7:10. Again, sorry, it will be just because of the way that they were posted. All right, I'm sorry. Actually, we didn't close the hearing.
Not yet.
Was there any public comment? Would anybody like to speak to the last, the associate member thing? Come right up, sir, if you could, to the table here with the microphones, state your name and address.
Russell May, 124 Main Street, Lakeville. Is this a paying position?
No.
No.
Thank you.
All right, being that it's almost 7:10, I move to close the public hearing for the article to amend Section 7.4.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The hearing is closed. Being that it is 7:10, I move to open the second public hearing that would amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw by adding to Section 2.0 definitions, reusable material or equipment, used yard maintenance equipment, tools, car parts, construction materials, metal, furniture, excluding farm equipment. On residential property, outdoor storage of reusable material or equipment shall be kept in one area and shall not exceed 500 square feet. The storage area shall be screened from view from the street and a butter's property, budding properties. No reusable material or equipment shall be stored in any front yard, whether screened or not. So that's a motion to open that hearing to make that change.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This public hearing is open. So looking for any discussions from Planning Board members on this change, the zoning bylaw change.
I'll just mention that I believe because this will be a new bylaw, it may not include anything that's preexisting because anything that's preexisting, I think that's going to be one of those lines that is going to be up for determination, whether or not, you know, something really needs to be included or not.
Peter, you have anything on this though?
So you're saying if this, if this, you're saying you wouldn't be able to enforce this throughout the town if this becomes a bylaw, if there's existing situations throughout the town?
That's what, that's what my concern is, that if it's, if it's, if this is going into effect in the hopes of taking care of something existing, potentially it'll be preexisting nonconforming, right?
Is that accurate, Ms. Cressel?
Yes.
Pretty well. So if somebody's front yard is a dump right now, they can stay a dump pretty much? And only if you could?
Is it a use? It has to be a use to be protected. So I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, if it, if it's a use, it has to be, it has to be.
So if somebody conducts a business and has some disarray, that's probably preexisting?
Probably part of their use. It has to be part of the use. There's, I did look into this when this came in. There's no, there's nothing, there's no case law controlling on this or anything. So the only thing I got was that it has to be part of the use. Is the residential use of a property, does that include what this board would consider junk on the front lawn? That's somebody's opinion.
Very subjective.
Yes.
It'd be hydroil force.
It would be.
All right, I think it opens the floodgates to a lot of people calling on their neighbors if they leave a little bit of stuff out, they don't like that. And it could be, I feel like it could be abused.
Do we have any other mechanism in our bylaws to control somebody just throwing junk all over their yard?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, I mean, there's, there are bylaws for unregistered cars.
Right. Washing machines, dryers, and that have accumulated years over years. We don't currently have anything that addresses that.
Well, unfortunately, it is somebody's private property.
Right.
And it is an opinion that it's junk. So the problem here is it's residential only, so.
Right.
That rises, that brings it to a higher level.
When you say a higher level?
Because if it were, if it were in, say, in the commercial zone, then most, most of that junk would be part of the use. It would be associated with the use. Here, we have this extra layer of, is this so-called junk part of the residential use? Is it or isn't it? I don't know.
So you're saying it needs to be settled in court?
I, I mean.
Possibly.
If you wanted to.
Keep this woman up till here.
I mean, I'm just saying, so it's probably defensible and indefensible in both ways depending on the argument.
Yeah, it would be very hard to enforce.
Okay. I'd love to hear any public opinion on this. If anybody would like to speak to this zoning bylaw change?
Hey Scott, is there such a thing as an attractive nuisance that might, I say, it's junk that could potentially attract children and be a potential hazard?
No, that's a liability standard, not a regulatory standard, unfortunately.
Anyone else? I did notice that bicycles was taken out of there, which I think that's beneficial to not have people calling on their neighbor because their kid left the bike out. I, I think that could become a real thing if it's in there, unfortunately. So that said, if there's no other discussion, would anybody want to make a recommendation or a motion to make a recommendation for a town meeting?
I'll move to make a recommendation to approve, or Planning Board to approve.
This one has me scratching my head a little bit, to be honest.
I'd like a second.
Me too.
I think it should go to town meeting.
Right.
But I can't really approve it. Because at first, when we first read this several weeks ago, I was like, oh, that's a no-brainer. I want that. I don't want the town going to hell. But then this could be easily go down the path of, you know, like you said, people just complaining about the next person, you know, about somebody just temporarily storing it in their front yard, you know, so. And, and there's nothing here that says, and when that happens, then this happens. And this is the guy who's going to come in, you know what I mean?
Who enforces it?
Exactly. Who, who enforces it? Us? I mean, we didn't, we didn't even.
Nate. Nate enforces it.
He's going to be fraught with lawsuits.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure he's going to enforce it with a letter. I mean, and those, those will, those will go for a while, but I'd like to see it go to town meeting and let everyone vet it through at town meeting, so.
Brendan Donaghy, Crooked Lane. So what happens if you are calling on somebody? Do you, who do you call? Like if you were going to report someone's yard for one of these offenses, how would you do it?
The building commissioner, it's in the zoning bylaw. So the building commissioner enforces the zoning bylaw.
So Nate would send a letter?
Or Nate would handle it however Nate wants to handle it.
Right.
He would either go out to the site, talk to the folks. He has a good way of doing that. He's very excellent at that. But yeah, it's clearly not spelled out how these matters get resolved.
Would there be a way to add a fine to prevent people from? Like you get a one-time thing where you call your neighbor if it's a legitimate thing. If it's not, then you get a warning, you know, you can't abuse this. And if they continue to abuse it by reporting things that aren't actual offenses, could you fine them for doing that?
I don't think that, there's no current mechanism for fining. And again, I'm sure Mr. Darling would come up with a method or, he applies everything so evenly and fairly. So if he, whether it be the first one or the 100th one of this past, if his method was go out, make a site visit, talk to people first, if there was no action, send a letter. I don't know, I can't tell you exactly how he would do that because it's not spelled out here. I'm sure he would do it tactfully and carefully, but there is no, currently the way this is drafted, there is no means for fines or anything like that either.
All right. That's the only way I can see to stop people from being annoying with it is to like put a penalty on them. Because if they're not going to have any recourse or any punishment for wasting his time and essentially wasting the town's time because he has to take time to go out there and see it, then they could abuse it all they want.
So you're saying to fine the people that report?
If people are.
In a nuisance fashion.
Right. Being vindictive against neighbors and things like that. The only way to stop them would be to put some sort of penalty for abusing the system.
Yeah, well, I think probably the simplest thing would be to not approve this if, and let it come back with better language if there was that bigger concern.
Carrie Trickman.
So any other public discussion? All right, I believe I have a motion in a second. Michelle made a motion and Jack made a second. So whatever our vote is, is what we will report on town meeting floor. So if it's a no vote, we do not recommend approval. And if it's a yes vote, we recommend it approval. So I'd like to call a vote at this time on, do a roll call vote, just state your name and what you think. Carrie?
Conroy, nay.
McEwen, aye.
Jack, aye.
Klein, no.
Knox, nay. So the motion to not to recommend would be our act on town meeting floor. So that said, I move to close the public hearing for the article to amend Lakeville zoning bylaw at Section 2.0.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing is closed. Next hearing. I move to open public hearing number three. This article would amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw, Section 4.0, Use Regulations, by adding to Section 4.1.2, Business Uses, Licensed Junk Car Dealers pursuant to the Town of Lakeville general bylaws and use chart shows that it would be allowed in business, not in residential, not in industrial, and not in industrial B. Licensed junk dealers will be allowed with a Y to explain the chart. So I have a motion to open that hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Hearing is open. So would anybody like to speak to this? It seems pretty cut and dry. If there's a licensed junk dealer, it would only be allowed in the business zone? Ms. Cressel, could you tell if there are preexisting junk dealers in other zones, would they be allowed to continue to operate? That's preexisting as a use.
Preexisting nonconforming use. Yeah.
So this enforcement would be moving forward, any new businesses in that? Entering that realm? Okay. Any Planning Board members like to speak to it?
I'll just state that because previously it was allowed in residential as well. So that's the change. Now it's just business.
Okay. Jack, you good?
No, I'm fine.
Peter?
Ready.
Yep.
Good.
Would anybody like to make public comments on this?
Yeah. Jim Mara doesn't run.
Good to see you, Jim. Good to see you.
Sorry, ahead. Good to see you. I wasn't prepared to talk on this one, but business zone. So the Lakeville Country Club is business zone, right?
Yep.
So if this passes, they can put junk dealers at the Lakeville Country Club business zone if they want to?
They could do it right now.
They could do it now because it's?
What we're taking away is residential.
Oh, it's already in business?
Correct.
Oh, okay. You're taking out residential. Good.
The only problem is if Lakeville Country Club changed to junk dealer, it'd have to pay that other family a million dollars. So is it really worth it?
Good. Okay.
He's selling that much junk.
Anybody else? All right. If that's the case, at this time, I'd like to motion to close the hearing and.
Didn't we vote?
No, we're doing that at the same. I'm going to do a simultaneous motion. So I'm going to move to close the hearing and recommend approval on town meeting floor.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so next on the agenda is public hearing number four. I move to open this article to amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw by modifying the following sections. Section 7.5.1, title and purpose, to delete the words, each as in effect as of June 16th, 2003, in the second sentence of the last paragraph thereof. Second Amendment is to amend Section 7.5.3, permitted principal uses, to add the new subsection six as follows. Six warehouse, comma, offices, or facilities for distributing merchandise. Number three, amend Section 7.5.5.2, buffer zones, to delete the existing text thereof and replace it with the text as follows. Developments in the mixed-use development district shall be subject to Section 5.2.5 of this bylaw, notwithstanding underlying zoning districts. The provision of Section 5.2.5 of this bylaw shall not apply to zoning boundaries internal to the mixed-use development district. Number four, to amend Section 7.5.5.3, lot coverage for office and research and development uses, to replace the existing section with the following. Lot coverage for all office, warehouse, offices, or facilities distributing merchandise and R&amp;D uses located in the mixed-use development district. A maximum of 60% of the upland area of the lot may be covered by structures, parking, and paved areas. Number five, amend Section 7.5.5.7, site plan approval, to insert the following at the end thereof. Provided that the Planning Board may grant exemptions from the provisions in Section 6.7.7 as set forth and based on the factors in the introductory paragraph to the, to such section or based on the type of structure proposed in the mixed-use development district. Number six, amend Section 7.5.5.8 to add a new section at the end of thereof as follows. Notice of the public hearing shall be provided as required by Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 11. The proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw may be viewed as, I'm going to keep that as part of the motion. So that's my motion to open the hearing to discuss that.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This public hearing is open. Any Planning Board members like to talk about this? I'm going to go right to the public.
Well, I have some, just a few things.
Go right ahead, Michelle.
So I wanted to just point out that, you know, we have proposed Article 13, which would require a special permit for any warehouse built over 100,000 square feet or more in the industrial zone. That was basically in response to the proposed development or industrial zoning change for the 155 acres off of County Street. And then also we have proposed Article 14, which is the removal of the DO district, which allows industrial development on 25 or more acres via special permit. So what we're doing here with mixed use would allow it without a special permit. And I know, yes, right now, mixed-use zone only applies to one area. But what's to stop it from going to town meeting and being placed in another area? And I know you think town meeting, a lot of people are going to be there. But then when we look back at the DO vote, there was only 76 votes and it passed, you know? And we know what we went through with that. So we have 11 pages of conditions that will go along with this one item. But we may not have a chance to do that if there's another mixed-use zone created in another area. So I think, I think this is really opening it up to potential development that could be.
Well, I think that the challenge would be to move that zone. I think that you'd be climbing up a pretty good hill to try and move the mixed-use development zone.
But not to move it, but to place it in another area.
Well, as I'm saying, to apply that type of zoning to anywhere else on the zoning map, I think would be an uphill battle. But I don't disagree, but at that time, if we saw that, we could just add or amend the special permit to the warehouse component.
But you know, towards change, different things happen, I just, it, I feel like we're here for, like, we've ended up in this place for a reason. And I think people are starting to pay attention and come out to these meetings, to the hearings because they've been wondering, how did we get in this position that we've been in? So I just, I hate to think that in a few years, people get more lax and, you know, maybe there's more developers on boards and committees.
Well, I, I think you're mixing two different things where. I think you're mixing two different things where you're talking about the future that hasn't happened yet. And I understand your concerns, but we got here because the Lakeville, the state closed the hospital and didn't clean up the mess. That's why we're here. We're not here because Lakeville Country Club or somebody else wants to make a zoning change.
And I agree, yes, it absolutely needs to be cleaned up. I don't know if holding the feet to the flames sort of, you know, for lack of a better analogy, is the best means of going about that.
I don't, I don't think it's feet to the flames, but... Did you have something you wanted to say?
Hey, Mark, what she's coming up, was there a reason that this wasn't done prior? Like during all the sales prior to Rhino purchasing it? Or is this really being predicated because Rhino's purchasing it and...
Rhino already owns it.
Right. I mean, why would this not have been done earlier?
Because the Development Opportunities District, so we thought existed and was applied over that property is what we were led to believe. So they had a different avenue for the use that they wanted to do. So the challenge now is a developer owns it, it's gonna do something. So we have to decide, is this the least harmful? Or are they gonna come up with something that's less harmful or more harmful if this doesn't work?
Yeah, I mean, it's truly a catch twenty-two. I think, I don't think there's anyone in town that doesn't want that property cleaned up. And that's a sixteen million dollar bill just to clean that property. But along the line, there were other individuals or companies that should have been held responsible for cleaning it up. I understand that's in the past, and that's why we are where we are today. It's just, it's a catch twenty-two.
Yep. Gonna add to that, Peter?
Well, I will add that going into the past and trying to, you know, dredge up who should have cleaned it up prior to this is absolutely useless. I, I've lost a lot of time and sleep over the past two years on this project, I can tell you that. Nothing about this has been easy. But when I look at all the options, all of the options, and that I worked for the entire town, all eleven thousand people, plus or minus, I have to think that, that this change today or in a couple of weeks in town meeting is what's best for the town.
Heather Bodwell, Ashburn Road. To Nora, the reason why they're doing this is because they don't want to go for industrial because it got voted down before, so they have to change mixed use, is my opinion. Mixed use, you told me the other day in the meeting that if the gentleman over on, and I know we keep using him as an example, but Mohammed who bought that property or on County Street, I was told in the meeting that he could go to town meeting and ask for mixed use if he subdivides property. So what changed between last week and today? You just said it's an uphill battle.
It would be.
But it would still be an uphill battle.
It would be an uphill battle if he did it industrial, if he did it mixed use, if he did anything, but it's not an uphill battle, they just have to bring it.
He has to get two thirds of the vote.
Exactly.
I don't think that's gonna be easy.
But what I'm asking is, a mixed use can be placed anywhere that there's a subdivisible lot in Lakeville.
Anything can be placed anywhere.
Okay, so don't say that it's not. I want the public to know that mixed use, if this gets changed to include warehouses, County Street can have a warehouse, is all I'm saying, I want the public to know this.
They could propose it.
Thank you, because what you said to her was, no, it's gonna be an uphill battle.
Couldn't have that. They would have to go through a zoning change.
I get that, but they can ask for it.
You're saying like it's just simply possible if they snapped their fingers and asked for it?
They can go for it at town meeting, just like the DO did, and seventy-six people voted this in. So what I'm saying is, they could go to some meeting down the line that we don't know about, you know, it's not like this where they have a billboard now, touche. You know, and sneak it right in with sixty-seven votes, mixed use, one fifty-five acres over there. I'm just saying, it's possible.
Anything's possible.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I just want to clarify that. Also, executive session, I want to ask counsel, is zoning issues allowed to be discussed during the executive session?
Mr. Chad, do you, I mean?
I'm sorry, through you, could she answer the question, please?
It's, yeah.
Can it be discussed?
It's not really related, what you're saying is not related to this zoning change.
Uh, yeah, it is.
Nope.
Okay, well, executive session minutes, they're gonna be available, correct?
I guess eventually, you have to ask the select board.
Oh, well, we've already asked, and we have to go through the AG's office, because apparently there's something up with them. Thank you.
Come right up, sir.
Morgan Long, one sixty-six Rhode Island Road, and also the owner of the Asornian Animal Hospital, luckily recently relocated. I'm here to speak before you, both as a Lakeville resident, and to bring my experience as a business owner in a heavily warehouse town, to what can lie in the future if these changes are made and proper moves are not made by the town to control it. I see in this wonderful document here, it says that vehicular traffic will be confined to a half mile from the site of four ninety-five. Who's enforcing that? The developer? They're gonna come, flip the property and be gone. Do we have already in place regulations that will allow the police department to enforce no overnight parking of trucks without the express permission of private property owner? Because you're gonna wind up with trucks, I don't care that there's a lot there. I know how these, I've owned the Asornian Animal Hospital since two thousand and thirteen. The battles I've had have been unbelievable. Trailers dropped in front of our door. I don't know if any of you know, but typical fifty-three foot fruhoff takes up thirteen parking spaces. Fifteen to seventeen, depending on what kind of tractor's on the front end of it. And when you have to go to the police department, they don't really have the teeth to enforce this unless it's an overt public safety issue. So now all of a sudden, you're gonna have trucks pulling off of four ninety-five into Walgreens, into CVS, to overnight, whether or not there's a lot there farther down the road or not. This is just their nature. Some of these people, I have, I have had to have conversations with them, and despite signs that say no truck parking here or there, I've had them literally say to me, well, I don't look at signs, I only pay attention to my GPS. So this can have a major impact on this town as we approve this stuff and open Pandora's box. You're talking about cleaning up that property, which is great, but I just don't want to see this town replace one problem with another.
I understand. To your point about the tractor trailers and the dumping of the trailers, we currently have a warehouse, an industrial park with several warehouses between that, further than, so the hospital property, the subject property that we're discussing for the zoning change, is between the highway and the industrial park. And no trailers get dumped from any of those buildings anywhere. So I'm just confused as to how that's a thing unless that was just isolated from a specific tenant that would just be careless like that.
Well, it is a thing, and here's why. Depending on who you get in as a tenant in that property, for instance, Stop and Shop, A-hole Incorporated, made all kinds of promises to free town. But then they get these truck drivers in and they tell them, we don't want you on our campus, on our resplendent expansive campus, for a half an hour before your dock time. So then they get dumped in town, in various places. They're in the Circle K parking lot, they're in the parking lot of the old Santander. This is how this peppers out, depending on who your tenant is, depending on how they are regulated, or if there's no regulation to say, if you're operating a warehouse here, you must show due cause for a plan to have these trucks on your site. To, to do the best in your capability to get these trucks on your site, and then the town to have a regulation to say, you know what, you're not parking in the Walgreens parking lot, you're not parking in the CVS parking lot, you're going to a designated space.
So a little further down in our agenda, we have the discussion to review the Lakeville State Hospital Development Agreement, which it sounds like you'd be making a recommendation with that to give some information, because that's a document that's gonna be finalized and signed by the select board. And so I would take those recommendations tonight in that section of tonight's meeting to ask that those things be taken into consideration, to be put into that development agreement, to somehow control that.
Okay. I think that's a great idea, because this can easily become an issue, I've looked it. Fortunately, now we're in the Asornia Four Corners and we're out of that area, but it's been an issue for all the businesses in that area. And even making comments about how they won't be in residential neighborhoods. This does happen, and someone should explain that to the folks, again, as an example of how this happens, the folks that live down in the Narrows, who've had the wires torn off their houses, because misguided tractor trailers have tried to loop around through those spaces. So we need a better way to regulate that mayhem. I realize that warehousing is an eventuality. I also realize that this town cannot afford to buy every available piece of property to prevent a warehouse from being there. And I think that's the wrong avenue to take. I think you need regulations in place to say, fine, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do this in an orderly manner, that doesn't impact the town.
I agree.
But we need to make those moves in concert with all these changes.
Yep. So again, so that development agreement would be the only parcel pretty much left undeveloped within that mixed-use zone. So hopefully we would control that with that. So again, I'm not trying to shut you down, I hear what you're saying, and we really just need to add that to our discussion tonight with that other document to make that recommendation to the select board.
So that we have something ironclad, something with teeth in it to enforce.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
I'm gonna go last, but I wanted to interject something just to support what's just been said. The last two times I've driven through the industrial park, there's been at least four trucks sitting in the right-hand lane going toward Route eighteen from Canada. In fact, I followed the Canadian truck out today.
All the way?
All the, well, no, just as far as Route one forty. But I guess what I'm trying to say to you is...
Cranberry season.
Whatever it is, the bottom line is, it punctuates the fact that you need to control the incoming and the outgoing traffic. And there's nowhere in the bylaw or the special permit, that's all in the operating plan of the tenants that are gonna lease the warehouses from Rhino, okay? And there's nothing in the special permit, I'm sorry, the development agreement, but there was in the MIPA commitments that were made by Rhino, okay? And we do have in the agreement some reference with regard to MIPA. But the comments that Rhino got from MIPA were commitments that Rhino made in order to mitigate the harms that this operation might cause. So I think what Michelle said about the lack of a special permit is relevant, because there are many things that were in the special permit. The bonding level was one, the noise management mitigation plan, and the post-operation sampling, those are blatantly absent from this operating agreement. And you guys spent an awful lot of time, you listened to me, and you wrote a lot of stuff, Rhino listened to me, a lot of stuff was written in the special permit, and it seems like we're discarding it. And while I appreciate what you're saying about the development agreement is a mechanism, it creates all kinds of problems, whereas I would have just said, special permit and then add on the other stuff. And I think it's a mistake to just throw away the special agreement without exhaustively going through what protections are still afforded by the agreement, because I have an awful lot to say, you'll cut me off at some point. The selectman said, just send it to Ari, and everything's hunky-dory, and I don't see that this bylaw articulates the protections that are required for a industrial warehouse going into a mixed use, because the underlying districts are residential and business. And I'll come back to you later, I just wanted to punctuate that I've actually seen those trucks queued up, and if it is cranberry season, okay, cold storage, but you already know about the cars down there, so.
Yeah, yep. You made a good point there. You wanna come right up, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Karen Carbin, I live on Montgomery Street. For me, I feel that this zoning change opens up Pandora's Box for us as a town. If we really want to have a warehouse on this site, if we think that Rhino is the right path to go, I personally don't. But if that is the way the town really wants to go and they want a warehouse on this site, I do not understand why we're not looking at this and to change the zoning for that particular property to be industrial. When you start to take like a mixed use and then interject the ability to have industrial as a primary, it kind of muddies the waters a little bit. It makes it difficult for people to understand the difference between mixed use and industrial, and what is primary and secondary. So if someone applies for a mixed-use permit for their property for a zoning change, and they go to special town meeting, and you need two-thirds of a vote, a majority vote, to change their property to mixed use, first of all, one of the reasons why this particular zoning event has garnered so much attention is because it is the, you know, the old hospital site that has sat there for thirty years, and it's a big concern to many people in town. But I find that the communication in town is not really great to let people know, unless you go looking for information, the information isn't out there. We don't really have a good vehicle to inform residents in this town of what is coming up and what is going on. So I find that a lot of times, for myself, I have found out information way down the line from when it began, and then you have to kind of figure out what's going on. So if somebody...
Have you gone on the town's website and subscribed to get emails?
Right, so a lot of people don't, what I'm saying is, people in town are not aware of that. You're aware of that, and, but there is no... I think it would be really good for the town to find a way to inform residents of things that are coming up without just relying on people looking for it. People really depend on their elected officials to protect their way of life, how they live. Nobody really thinks about that they have to monitor things so carefully after...
So are you saying that the town needs to mail something every time?
Well, not maybe.
I'm not trying to be a wise guy, because like I said...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not really sure what the exact mechanism could be, but I think it needs in some way to change. I know we just recently have a local newspaper again, but I think there really needs to be a better way to communicate to residents about things that are coming up. Meetings are not really well-attended, town meetings are not well-attended. So some of these zoning changes that are, that may have very big impact on the town itself are not well-attended because people are really not aware.
I don't think they want to be aware.
Some of it is complacency on the part of people that live in town, but some of it's just lack of knowledge, lack of how town government works. So if you have someone that has a property that they want, they really want to use for industrial use, but they really don't want to say, they don't really want to come up front and say, we want to put a warehouse on this property, but we know that if we apply for a mixed-use permit, that's exactly what we can do. So they can come to town meeting and say...
It's not a mixed-use permit, that's not a thing.
Well, whatever it is, mixed-use zoning, I'm using the wrong words, forgive me for my lack of knowledge of that, but where, you know, you are applying for a change in zoning, you call it mixed use, knowing that you can use it primarily as an industrial property if you get a mixed-use zoning change. knowing that you can use it primarily as an industrial property if you get a mixed use zoning change. So if people don't understand that, then even people that do go to the town meeting can say, okay, well, yeah, sure, you know, you can have a mixed use for your property if you want, without understanding what's going to happen to that property. So I think that making it possible to apply for mixed use zoning.
I'm gonna ask you to speed it up. You're kind of saying the same thing. I understand where you're going with it.
Because you can do that and it kind of masks the fact that you really want industrial use. That's my point. And I think that going forward, that could happen on multiple occasions on multiple properties in this town. So I think that, you know, we ought to call it what it is. If it's going to be industrial use, let's make the zoning change industrial use. If it's going to be mixed use, let's keep it mixed use. I don't see the point in making a zoning change.
Well, there's a lot of other parcels within the mixed use zone that are residential, are retail, are other businesses within that zone. So it is mixed use. And I understand your concern about the warehouse component, but that entire parcel is being used as mixed use. So you'd be taking away from all the other parcels there if you just made the whole thing industrial.
Well, they could do a spot zoning change.
No, you can't do a spot zone. Is that correct? You just can't go around a spot zone? So you couldn't do that. But again, to your point, that entire parcel that's currently zoned, mixed use zoning, all of the components, it's not just the hospital property now or the subject property at 43 Main Street. There's a pharmacy, a funeral home, affordable housing, residential homes, all that exists on it. And there's going to be other stuff as well.
But no warehouses?
Not currently. Well, there is a storage warehouse.
Stealth store.
I didn't go for it.
You're getting close. Would you like to speak for John Jenkins?
Yes, thank you. I know I came in late, but I, you know, I'm actually watching this on my cell phone from the beginning, so I haven't missed any of the fun.
Excellent.
In the conversations. And to the woman that just spoke, I think just Lake Cam alone is a wonderful way to attend all the meetings on your cell phone and a headset. So, you know, promote Lake Cam to promote the meetings. You can go to all the town meetings and still stay home and, you know, make it easy. You know who I am and you know the involvement we've had with the planning board and the town and the legal, the issues and whatnot.
If you could, just for the record, they'll state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is John Jenkins and I live on Pickens Street in Lakeville.
Thank you.
And I've been a resident for maybe 30 years. So I just have one question. We know we went to court and the land court judge says the application of the DOD as determined by the town was inappropriate. It was done incorrectly. And the crux of the matter was there was nothing shown on the town map to indicate where a DOD was. And the argument was, well, it's townwide. And the judge said, no. And of course, there's an appeal going on, but the appeal currently is not appealing to the decision, but they're appealing the standing of the plaintiffs to say, do you guys even have the right to sue? So nobody's arguing with the judge's decision. They're just trying a legal maneuver to get it thrown out.
So I'm sorry, all that was filed was a notice of appeal.
Yeah.
The notice of appeal just states that they're appealing it. There's been no briefs filed.
Correct.
So I don't know how you know what they're appealing and what they're not appealing, because I don't.
Okay, well, I'll just leave it like that. So that's what I believe it to be. Let me ask a question.
So that's what you believe it to be, but that's not. When you file a notice of appeal, it's one page. It just says they're appealing. So you then have 45 days, well, once the appeal is docketed, which it, I don't, it is docketed, I think, as of this week. But they have 45 days to file a brief and that brief is, it's 60 pages that lays out your argument. So I'm not sure how this gentleman knows what they're appealing and what they're not appealing. Because I don't know that yet. I haven't read the brief yet.
Well, be then as it may.
I want to just, one point before you go on. I'll let you go on. Have you ever spoke at town meeting or at any meeting and not said development opportunities district?
I don't know.
I don't think so. I think every time you've come up to my, because we're talking about mixed use zoning.
Exactly.
So I'd like you to stick to that if you could.
Well, that's, it's exactly to that point. My question is, why didn't the town or the planning board, if you knew that the application was incorrect, instead of developing a new, that's a plane of words, instead of developing a new version of the mixed use, why didn't you just effectively take a black magic marker, if you will, circle the hospital property and say, DOD, vote on it? Why don't we just keep it simple? Why didn't we just do that? That's what the...
Have you not paid attention to any meetings we've had?
I've paid attention to every meeting, I think.
So that you would know that answer. It was brought up when we were here at a selectman's meeting. Dick Scott actually said it right next to you. We had the fear that all 25-acre parcels would be bought for warehouses. So the planning board voted to remove the development opportunities district to stop that from happening townwide.
Couldn't you have still done that, had a vote on that, and then voted the DOD out after that?
Could have done anything.
But that's my point. Instead of changing all the rules around, why don't just people say, here, I want this to be the last DOD in town. Let the town vote on it and be done with it. And instead, we've got everybody arguing over, you know, putting industrial into mixed use and warehouse and special, special agreements. It just seems like it was such a simple way to go.
People would be here arguing that. Right?
I can't speak to what people would do.
Would you?
Would I do what?
Argue the, if we just tried to overlay that parcel with the development opportunities district?
Not at all. Not one bit. That is the crux of...
I find that hard to believe, John.
Well, that is the crux of the suit that was filed. I mean, my personal feeling was, the way it was handled, this wasn't a fight about Rhino putting in a warehouse. This was a fight about that said, I never got to vote yes or no on what was going to be developed there.
Then why do people have signs that say no warehouse? Why do people have signs that say no warehouse?
Because there's a faction in town that doesn't want a warehouse there. That's their opinion.
Nobody has the thing that says, we wanted that zoning. Nobody has a sign that said that. I never had that.
Well, my point is you said, you said to me, well, I don't believe that you wouldn't have argued the point. And I'm trying to answer that with the reason, I would not have argued the point because this was, it was never a warehouse issue with me.
Do you have anything that you want to add to tonight's discussion?
No, I just wanted to ask the question and clarify the question that you asked me.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yep.
How's it going?
Why don't you say, oh, now that you're doing the presentation?
I'm just gonna add a few comments. I don't have a formal presentation or anything of that nature.
Oh, will we download that input from the residents?
No.
Oh, okay.
Go. So my name is John O'Leary. For the record, I'm a project manager at Rhino Capital. I've been working on this project since its inception in 2020, working alongside my colleague, Tyler Murphy. So I want to sort of bring it back to the Article 15 that's on the proposed Warren article at town meeting on November 14th. That is why we're here. That is what we're here to discuss. And I want to, I know that there's going to be further discussion on the development agreement and it is open for everyone to have that conversation, but I want to articulate to the folks that aren't necessarily here so that everybody understands exactly what amendments 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are that are on Article 15. So if you wouldn't mind, I'm just gonna kind of, I live a lot in zoning bylaws, probably less than Amy, but nearly as much. And so I want to just take a few minutes here just so that everybody understands exactly what it is that they will be voting on at town meeting on November 14th. So there are six total amendments to the mixed use zoning district. Important to note that the mixed use zoning district only exists in a 73-acre parcel. That is where everyone seems to know it has the CVS, it has the self-storage facility, it has the funeral home, it has the residential subdivision. To the concern that this zoning district could end up in another area in town, you use the words uphill battle as the fight to, you know, rezone a parcel. I am certainly fighting that uphill battle and I can assure you, it is an uphill battle. There are a lot of checks and balances that are in place. There are a lot of elected officials that protect the interests of the residents and prevent certain things like this from just happening. They don't just happen at the drop of a hat. So I want to make sure that that's clear. The mixed use district as it exists today, as everybody is aware, the only undeveloped parcel in the mixed use district is the hospital property, is that property that Rhino owns and that these amendments apply to. So again, getting into these amendments, numbers one and six that were listed by Mark, one is essentially the deletion of a reference to the 2003 bylaw. It's a clarification. It's a clerical correction. Number six is in reference to notice for public hearings so that it aligns with mass general law. Both of those are more or less clerical items. Two, three, four, and five get really into the teeth of the article. And I want to make sure that everybody really understands exactly these amendments. So number two, warehouse office or facilities of distributing merchandise will be moved from a permitted accessory use to a permitted principal use. So as they exist today, we could go down and permit something with an accessory use of warehousing. So it's moving something that is currently accessory use into a principal use. Number two, number three, excuse me, talks about buffer zones. As it exists currently, and Amy, step in here if I'm misspeaking at all, but my understanding is that permitted uses, which are office buildings, medical facilities, research and development, age-qualified housing, supermarket retail, and big-box retail, have buffer zones that allow building up to 20 feet from residential buffers. This amendment would put in place a 100-foot buffer for warehouse use. That is in line with what we had proposed in 2021 and it's built to protect the residents that have bought the property. Again, I think that's an important thing, important clarification to make, 20 feet to 100 feet. Number four is more or less a clerical item as well. Lock coverage for office and R and D is currently listed as 60% minimum lock coverage, or excuse me, maximum lock coverage. It would group warehousing into that max lock coverage. And numbers five is regarding site plan approval. It specifically pertains to architectural standards that exist within site plan approval package. And those architectural standards are things like a gabled roof, asphalt roofing, wood shingles, things that aren't applicable to commercial construction, regardless of whether it's a supermarket, a research and development facility, or a warehouse. The amendment number five allows the planning board flexibility around those specific architectural standards. So that is what Article 15 is. Article 15 is not a vote yes for a warehouse. It is a vote yes to allow Rhino to come back to the planning board with a site plan approval package and a development agreement attached to it to then propose a plan. I want to make that abundantly clear, that Article 15 is not yes on our design. It is yes on allowing us to then resubmit a revised design under the warehouse use classification. So that kind of concludes my comments. And I think I just want to touch quickly on one thing that was mentioned by a couple of different residents. And that is resident participation. Me, I'm not a resident of Lakeville. I don't have the ability to vote on this article being enacted. And I'm speaking to the people that are watching this online, watching this on YouTube, Facebook, later dates. Please come out and vote, participate in your community events. You have the ability to control the outcome of this property. We feel that a warehouse development is the only financially viable solution to take on the burden of remediation of this property. It is the least impactful use. It is the lowest traffic of any proposed use that can take on the financial burden. It is the least impactful use that could take the burden, again, of the environmental remediation. So I urge you, please come out and vote, let your voice be heard. You, the residents of Lakeville, have the ability to control the outcome.
So can I ask a question about what happens if this fails?
Sure.
So I understand that there's a lot of concern about if it fails, it could become housing. And while I think a lot of fear around affordable housing is misplaced racism because a lot of it does deal with certain types in affordable housing and all of that, is there any power the planning board has to prevent someone from coming in and doing the 800 units that might fit? I think that's what Tyler said.
You cannot, if it's affordable housing, you cannot deny it.
Any type of housing. Is there any power that you have over any type of housing or is it just affordable that you have nothing?
Well, the underlying zone there is residential, so somebody could do...
It's residential, yeah.
Residential anyway.
They would have to, it would have to, it would have to follow the bylaw. So it would have to have the right, the amount of, it would depend on what kind of residential they were doing. But if it were a 40B, they don't have to follow the bylaw.
Unfortunately, you know, I can't speak for the developer. I'm only making an assumption. But to what the gentleman just said about the viability financially to remediate the property and to put something in there that's profitable, I would say if it's housing, it would be as dense as possible and it probably would be affordable housing in order to achieve that density in order to make back enough to clean up that property.
So thank you. The second question, and this is, I don't even know if this is possible, but would there be a way for the town to chip in with that cost? Could the townspeople vote on it? Because there's a lot of people who talk about how it's awful, it needs to be cleaned up. But they never really seem to offer any solutions for that. They always go back to, well, it's the state's problem, it's the developer. Is there a way for the town to vote on kicking in half the cost or some amount of the cost that would reduce their financial burden that prompts them to want to put the warehouse in? They want to do a warehouse because it costs so much to clean up. I mean, and I understand that completely.
So are you suggesting that this would allow them to do a different use?
Well, if it helps them recover some of the costs that they're putting the warehouse in to recover, is alleviating, is it possible for the town to alleviate some of the financial burden that's prompting them to try and put in the warehouses? So that they could explore other options like some of the things that have been discussed at previous meetings?
I think that'd be a tough sell to the town, to the townspeople to say, let's give that guy 4 million bucks. You know what I'm saying?
I do. What if, would it be possible if they donated or, I don't know if it would be donate, if the town bought a couple acres, four acres of it, and that was the exchange? That they give up some of the property for the town to use as something? And then they would have less of a financial burden to clean it up?
I can't say. I mean, it's their properties or it would be something that would be a conversation with them to have. And not to cut you off, but I want, the zoning article itself right now.
So then the legitimacy of the housing fear that people have, is that very legitimate? Is it somewhat exaggerated? In your opinion, where would you place that?
I'd have to, you'd have to ask the developer that, really.
Okay, thank you.
So you're not gonna read everything in that, are you?
No. Real work, this work. I mean, in Mr. Jenkins' defense, I mean, we really are here, Jim, our pheasant run, is because the DOD did fail and we're in this situation. You wouldn't be proposing this. You wouldn't be proposing this amendment if they had won their court case. So because of the DOD, we are here at this moment. And I think everybody wants this property cleaned up. And it's just, a warehouse, principal use warehouse has always been for industrial in Lakeville up until now. This would be the first principal use warehouse in any other part of Lakeville. Wouldn't it be if this passes?
Unless, I don't know if there are pre-existing or informing warehouses in other use groups or zones. I don't know that, for fact, for everything.
Okay. And I know they're focused on the mixed, right now it's a mixed-used area, and they're focusing on the forty-nine acres that are not developed yet. But I guess if they made a deal to buy all the other properties around there, I guess they could even put a bigger warehouse if the article did get passed through. Just because there's other businesses there now, CVS and a storage, doesn't mean those could be gone in five years. And then a bigger warehouse could go in, because once you pass the warehouse on mixed use, it can go anywhere on that mixed-use property, correct?
I guess in theory, that would be allowed, right? If that was possible. You're going pretty hypothetical to say that every business on that property is going to close, or they're going to buy them out.
No, I'm just saying, once you do this rezoning, a warehouse could go anywhere on that area. If it did pass. And then everyone is concerned about the environmental cleanup. But I believe, I don't know if it's town council, or I think Tyler had mentioned at the meetings that they only have to maintain and contain the environmental hazards. But they do have this environmental undertaking agreement, you know? And they do have to comply with all federal, state, local, regional environmental laws. So I don't know if that's being done or has not been done. I know Tyler has mentioned...
It's not part of the zoning article, Jim.
I know, but it does apply to, you know, their big problem is they need to put a warehouse in in order to remediate the hazardous waste. They may have an obligation to get rid of this, some of this hazardous stuff on their own right now. And, you know, so the town's being told, well, the only way we can clean up this site is if we put a warehouse in. That's basically how I see it. That's how it's been portrayed to me. They're not saying what Plan B is. The residents might like Plan B better than Plan A, but they're not going to tell us what Plan B is, because they want Plan A, because it's more profitable for them. But it's all about the environmental cleanup that's causing the problem. Because they say it's ten million dollars, but...
Maybe the zoning is causing the problem.
The zoning is, well, they don't want to put mixed-use development there, because they're not going to make as much money. Now, we don't know, do they make fifty million on mixed use or a hundred million on a warehouse?
That's not...
It is, but Lakeville's basically being put in a position, you want it cleaned up? Let us put our warehouse in, and then we'll clean up the environmental problem there. Who knows if they have an obligation? Has the federal EPA been involved? I mean, it sounds like...
Again, nothing to do with the zoning, Jim. I want to stay on track.
Okay, no, I hear you, but I do think it all comes back to the environmental issues there.
Well, keep in mind, and I know it's been said several times, but the state didn't clean it up when they owned it. Obviously, they weren't obligated. And then they sold it to another company that didn't clean it up when they owned it.
Right.
And nobody went back after them.
As soon as you sell it, it's the person who owns it now.
And they're not going to clean it up until they can afford to clean it up.
They may be forced to clean it up if buildings start coming down.
Let's talk about the zoning article.
The zoning is, there's no principal use warehouses, to my knowledge, in Lakeville, but in the industrial park, which is owned industrial. So, I mean, if you really wanted an industrial use, you know, why is it in an industrial-zoned area instead of a mixed-use area? That's my position. You know, it just, you know, it's being, they lost with the DOD case, they're appealing it. Let them appeal it, and, you know, there's no guarantee they're going to, when they're appealed, lose their appeal. But, I mean, it's almost like you feel like you're being blackmailed. Like, you really want it cleaned up, let us put our warehouse in, and we'll clean it up for you. I mean...
So nothing on the zoning?
On the zoning is, I do think it's a, you know, you're changing it, and I do agree with Michelle that you're setting precedent. If another mixed-use development comes up to vote, and they build another store there, retail store there, but then a new owner says, I don't want that there. It's mixed use, we can put a warehouse there. It's already passed. So I do think it opens the door up for more of this, like, well, it's the only one right now. Well, there could be another one, and now we've just allowed warehouses in mixed-use, industrial. I mean, maybe we should just allow warehouses in residentially-zoned areas too. And then they can go everywhere in Lakeville, you know, because then developers don't have to go through these. But I mean, that's how it feels, that's how it feels.
My wife and I spent over a year with National working on an agreement that led to this zone, mixed-zone use, being approved at town meeting. And we had a development agreement. And the minute National sold it, that agreement went away. When I brought it up in the Cisco argument, they said, it's gone. It's mixed use, you had a development agreement for mixed use, we're changing the zoning. All that work for protections went away, okay? The front part of that was supposed to, that mixed zone was supposed to be retail, which has a benefit to the town. The back part of that was supposed to be senior housing, which at the time, we didn't have as much senior housing at LeBaron's or in town at large. The middle was kind of a quasi-zone, which included office space, because at the time, telemarketing was a big thing. And we thought there might be a possibility of that, okay? So I guess it was kind of a, the middle was quote-unquote unknown. It kind of straddled the residential and business area, but we said, okay, we'll try to make it as broad as we can. So we said office, R and D, and we still held out hope that there might be some quote-unquote light manufacturing that could go in that area. And that's why we allowed the warehouses. But it was made abundantly clear that it was an auxiliary warehouse and not a primary warehouse, okay? The remaining parcels, the part that Rhino owns of the original seventy-nine acres represents sixty-two percent. So if the gentleman who spoke earlier gets his warehouse in this mixed-use bylaw, he's going to, I believe, have by right the ability, with proper permitting, the ability to put warehouses on that property. Sixty-two percent is a majority of the original. Of the seventy-nine acres, some of that went for the rerouting of Route seventy-nine. And then we're the victim of the subdivision law. Parcels were subdivided over and over. Some of it was done for business, some of it was done for housing, some of it was done for forty-B. Bottom line is, that seventy-nine was subdivided, and we got very, very far away from what the original mixed-use was, okay? So I guess what I'm saying to you is, if you look at the history of how we got here, the DOD route, the judge ruled that there were still enough harms to have standing. And what that was, was noise from backup alarms and emissions from idling trucks. There's nothing in this article that I see. And you've said that you're going to have a development agreement. And I've already sensed from the chairman of the Board of Selectmen that I'm going to have limited input, because at the end of the Selectmen Board meeting, he said, put it in writing, send it to R eight, and we'll think about it. I spent an awful lot of money on technical experts on noise, technical experts on diesel emissions. And I don't have a very high comfort zone. I have a much higher comfort zone, Mark, now that we're chatting, okay? So I honestly feel like I'm going to get a hearing on what the development agreement might look like in order to have protections. But I am still worried about, it doesn't have the same stature of enforceability that a special permit has, because you're given broader, I believe, broader authority in what you can and cannot say to a developer in order to get the kinds of things that I think the people who are most affected... I haven't even got into traffic, because that's another issue. And there's nothing in here that talks about traffic, okay? And that's a major factor, okay? So I won't go into that, except to say, Amy, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen said you wrote this bylaw. Is that correct?
No, this bylaw, no.
Okay, so where did this bylaw come from?
I worked with the chair, I worked with the chair of the Board of Selectmen, the chair of the planning board, town administrator, and attorney Mather.
Okay, so I guess there's a certain level of anxiety in that we don't know what to believe when we talk to our selectmen. I feel like this board has given us a lot of input, okay? And that's why we've made the progress. And the plans that Rhino has submitted reflect those improvements. There's a berm. There's several things that have been done to accommodate the butters, and I appreciate it. Tyler used a good analogy. He said, we've come a certain level, and we're now at the one-yard line. I'm afraid we don't have the will or the time to get over that last yard, okay? But I really don't think that we should be forced to make a bad idea work when what's right in front of us is what we could do. And we did have a meeting, and Mr. Olson at the end said, so you feel that you might be willing to support mixed use? At the very end. And we all picked up on it, and we said, hallelujah. What was it, Sudbury that...? Sudbury, okay. So I guess what I'm trying to say, and I'll get right back to this. Since, Amy, what was this bylaw intended to accomplish?
It's right in the amendments. So it was to make a warehouse, offices or facilities for distributing merchandise a primary use instead of an accessory use. It was to increase the buffer from twenty to a hundred feet. It was to the lock coverage of sixty of the upland area. There would be some flexibility with regard to architectural standards, and the other two were just administrative. I'm repeating what everybody's already said.
Okay, that's fine. If I go to section two, it says warehouses, offices, and facilities for distributing merchandise. I'm not sure what the difference between a warehouse and a facility for distributing merchandise is, but we're going to write it in the bylaw. So what are you putting in? What is Rhino putting in? What are those block boxes going to be?
You mean the buildings?
Yeah. No, 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 what are they going to be used for? I'm getting to tenants. It's going to be a building. Because depending on who the tenants are, that's going to, who's going to be operating it, okay? So I guess what I'm leading up to is, when we saw the marketing for this property after Rhino started the first project, it became Lakeville Logistics Center. I don't know what a logistics center is. And I don't know what the difference between a warehouse and a logistics center and a facility for distributing merchandise is. And I think it's really, really important for the townspeople to understand what those definitions are. Don't you?
Yeah, do you want to speak to any of that, John?
I can, yeah. I think, you know, who the tenant is at this point is, we don't know just as well as you. I mean, it's, it's a, the idea, I think, and I don't want to speak for that language, but, you know, casting as wide a net as possible so that we can attract a tenant. I think Tyler had used the example that, you know, we had a project in East Bridgewater that had paper goods, hydroponics. I can't remember the other two, but there were a few others that he listed. And please, I encourage all of you to go back and watch that presentation. I can't fill his shoes. So I think the idea behind that language is to ensure that we're casting as wide a net as possible to ensure that we can attract the tenant.
Thank you. Mark, wouldn't you agree that if we knew who the tenant was, it would be much easier to sell this bylaw change? Because a lot of known, unknowns become knowns. Because I keep coming back to, if it's a benign warehouse like Talbert's has been for the last ten years, it's not going to be operating at night other than the skeleton crew, and nobody will even know what the hell's going on inside that building. We don't know what's going to happen. So you're asking us to make the bylaw change. Now, I admit it's a high bar, because for every no, they got to get two yeses. So it is a high bar. I keep coming back to, if we want to make this mixed-use work for the current owner, then we have to get down to the weeds, okay? And I'm concerned that the development agreement is not the proper way to do it. I think the special permit augmented with some quote-unquote design engineering that talks about economic feasibility, best available current technology, then I think we can get to it. Because once you know the tenants, you know the real volumes, you know the real operating hours, you know all those things. So I'll get back to the permit so I don't get scolded. There's a lot of literature that talks about warehouses being next to residential zones. And Mark, I've heard you say occasion, and I can't remember the exact date, but you said sometimes that an industrial use next to a residential zone may need as much as three hundred feet as a buffer, depending on what kind of engineering is provided.
I know, I don't know the date that I said that, but I was, that was sort of in retaliation against the proposal at Lakeville Country Club. That was not specific to generally industrial areas against residential. That was a fight against something that we didn't want to fight.
And just to add an emphasis to that, when we did our thing with National and came up with the development agreement, we were the first people to ask for a hundred-foot buffer between business and residential, okay? Because then buffer zones could just be geography without any trees or improvements or berms or anything, okay? And somehow, this bylaw morphed into twenty or forty feet. I guess I fell asleep when that happened, but a hundred foot just isn't a whole lot of distance, okay? And I'll just leave it at that, okay?
It's better than twenty, though.
I won't argue, I won't argue. But even the DOD offered us a hundred with a berm, that it cost me twenty-five hundred dollars to have an engineer say that's what is reasonable, as well as the acoustic fence, which I still think acoustic fence is a good idea, but we also need acoustic fence right where the sound's being produced, and that's where the trucks are. But we'll talk about that when we do site plan review. And then finally, going back to what the judge said. When we did our appeal, they said noise from backup alarms, and we know that there are ambient-sensing, non-tonal backup alarms that can't be heard more than a hundred and fifty foot away, okay? Right now, Rhino's new project is actually getting closer, okay? Not having the bays on that one side, okay? But the building itself is closer, and we've created an opening. So this permit, as the plan has been shown to us, creates a place for sound to migrate. And obviously, that would come up in site plan review?
It would, but I think you're being a little unfair with, and I don't want to get into a site plan reviewing thing. Those trucks are now four hundred and eighty feet because of the building separation. There are no trucks between the buildings, and it'd still be four hundred and eighty feet from the lot line.
Well, when we see the new study, we'll know, won't we?
Yeah.
And I have a lot more to say, but I'm not going to waste your time.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Um, if we were to strike bullet point two, which allowed the warehouses, would it keep the buffer zone adjustment? Or does that only apply to warehouses as primaries?
Uh, maybe is that language specific to those uses?
Um, if you struck two, then you would also have to amend three to take, because the only, um, no, you'd have, I'm sorry, four, no, two, I'm sorry, three. You would have to, um, developments shall be such as to, um, so anything would be, so I, I'm confused what you're trying to say. Sorry, you're, if we take out warehouses as a primary use.
Is the buffer adjustment specific to warehouses as a primary use?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, it's not. It's, it's, it's for the mixed use development district.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's subject to 5.25 and 5.25 says business and industrial uses are 100 foot buffer. So if it was a residential use, no, I don't think it would be 100 feet.
Chairman Ochs, Michael Olson. I'm the owner of Rhino Capital. I just want to thank all of you for all your hard work. And I also want to thank everybody here in the audience. It's very admirable what you all are doing. And you've inspired my wife and I to get more involved. We live in Boston, so thank you. There's no ill will. We want to continue to work with everybody. You have our email address. We're going to be in the community moving forward up until the vote. We're not there to change anyone's minds. We're just there to spread information. We want people to make the most informed decision that they possibly can for their town. When we first came here a few years ago, the resounding feedback was, we'd like to see that site cleaned up. We went back to the drawing board. We came back with what was the only financial viable option to clean up that site. And that happened to be the warehouse that we proposed. Obviously, things happened since then, brought us to today. We looked at mixed use, similar to what National Development did. We've reached back out to folks like that to talk about that. It's unfortunately not financially viable. My personal opinion is I want everyone to be happy. Obviously, people aren't happy right now and that pains me. I wish we could do that. We can't. People have asked, what's plan B? And I think they feel like there's a Klannenstein plot or some type of blackmail of saying, well, do this, otherwise I don't know what's going to happen. The truth of the matter is I, I don't know what's going to happen if this gets voted down. I can tell you what I believe will happen. And what I believe will happen is we will have to sell the property. And I believe the only people that we're going to be able to sell it to are going to be 40B developers. And I think the important thing to know, and we don't want to do that. That's not a threat. That's just a fact of what I think is going to happen. It's not an ultimatum either. And again, I think the important piece is back to where you all, I think you all want. That site cleaned up, those 40B developers don't have to. There's a landfill there that they could just cap, they wouldn't have to do it. And we've read through the environmental language and unfortunately that's a fact. We want to clean it up for you. I know you talked about, well, mixed use is not going to make as much money as a warehouse. This warehouse unfortunately, the first one the economy is, not going to make much money either. But we want to do it. We want to live up to the word that we provided to everybody. We want to see that site cleaned up. I know there's a lot of fear in this town that this is going to set a precedent, as you talked about earlier. And I definitely empathize with that and I see where it's going. But with people like the Scots, people like Heather and John, who we've gotten to know, and the Lakeville Residents for Responsible Growth, I just don't see anything slipping through the cracks and people getting complacent this time. You all care and you're all mobilized, you're well informed. And I understand the fear, but we're all trying to do this for this site. I don't believe this is going to ignite a wave of warehouse development. You all are going to make sure that's not going to happen. And if you don't, that check and balance doesn't work, they're all going to make sure that doesn't happen. So to me, this is not a vote of warehouse to no warehouse. For me, it's a vote of, do you want the site cleaned up or do you not want the site cleaned up? Obviously, we know where we stand on that issue. And whatever the, where the vote goes, again, I don't know how it's going to go. But I at least wanted to be transparent and honest about where I do think it's going to go so that can factor into people's, um, decision making as the vote comes up on November 14th. We will continue to make ourselves available. We look forward to meeting more people and we look forward to speaking with everybody. So thank you again for the time.
Thank you. You can come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Lynn Laddony, Houss Road.
What's her name?
Lynn Laddony, from Houss Road. He just said something that concerned me. Is that so that if this goes, if this went into housing, that they don't have to clean the land? That they could put 40B housing on top of that with only capping the land?
They would build around it and they would likely just tap that landfill, correct?
That's kind of frightening. That was just my one question when I heard that. That's, that's interesting. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll be quick. Heather Bodwell, Rush Pond Road. I have an offer for you, Mike. I have an offer for you. So you said?
Should, should I be allowing this zoning hearing?
I'm sorry.
You know what you're going to say. I don't know what you're going to say.
So the town voted to buy the Lakeville Country Club for $13 million. The town did. What the board did was different. Whatever you guys have put in so far, plus the amount you bought it for, under 6 million? Under 10? Okay, we'll buy it. And I want to say why the town can buy it. As a municipality, municipality, as a munis, no, I'm saying what we could do to remediate the hazards. As a municipality, we can apply for the brownfield like you guys couldn't. We can apply for all these funds. I've been in touch with the Mast EP in Boston, the federal EPA, everyone. So I'm just saying, it's a possibility that they could sell it to the town.
Anything is possible, like I said. So what I'd like you to do is, we're not going to continue with that.
Okay, but he just talked about it. So I just wanted to rebut what he said on the housing. Okay, well, the housing is just a scare tactic because I'm pretty sure builders, $10 million to remediate it, to knock all those buildings down to build 40B is not a profitable business. So I don't think they would buy that.
All right, so at this point, I'm hoping to wrap this up. Anyone else? All right.
Um, Mark, I just have a, a question. And, um, when do we anticipate? I know it's later on the agenda, the memorandum agreement.
After this.
It's, and the reason I ask, it's difficult for me to vote on the mixed use amendment with not, without having a finalized memorandum agreement.
Well, we're not going to go through that and hash through legal language. I think my intent was to take suggestions and we assembled, Kathy could jot everything down of, of a butter concerns, planning board member concerns that we feel should be in that development agreement. And motion to send that to the board of selectmen to have that hopefully put in that.
I'm just troubled.
Yep, so if you want to, I'll close the meeting to public discussion, leave the hearing open. And then if you want to go through that discussion for the, uh, development agreement, we can do that now. And then after that's completed, we'll.
I would be more comfortable with that.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing to public discussion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that said, I'm leaving the hearing open and we're going to jump to the discussion of the development agreement. So there have been concerns, understandable, uh, regarding this document. I will clarify that this document is a document that the board of selectmen signed. It's not something that the planning board signs. However, they have been, uh, receptive to input from the planning board. I offered at this meeting, Dick, when we had that information meeting for people to give their input here. So I would like to hear people's input. I'd like, I was going to say, this is going to stay on track. I don't want to hear about a lawsuit. I don't want to hear about anything, but give us your input as to what you think should go in this development agreement and that's it. Fair enough, Jim?
Sounds good.
Jim? Uh, Kathy, do you? This is all going to be recorded, so you can get stuff that's in, dabbled. Okay. Who wants to go first? I'm right up there.
First of all, the only reason I have this mess is because on Monday I made the mistake of going to that podium. How I became the only mask wearer, I don't know, but special permit versus development agreement. All right, to me, the special permit should be in the development agreement, period. Now, if there's any parts that no longer apply to the current vision, then go ahead and strike them out, but you need it.
So you're, you're talking about the previously developed special permit?
Correct. It's the building block for.
Agreed.
Okay.
So we did go through that at some length and picked out, uh, I, I shouldn't say, we eliminated parts that were site specific to the first plan. And when I say that landscaping, uh, with the proposal of the moving of the building and stuff, we did take things out of it that were no longer pertinent or would need to still be picked up by site plan review. My recommendation to you is you put into, as precise a language right now, things that you feel related to sound or other pertinent things that aren't going to be picked up again at site plan review.
I don't know how deep you're going to go in site plan review, but.
Or you'll be there.
I know that, but, but I guess, I guess the point I, I'm trying to make is in that special permit, for example, the board of health recommended post construction, six month operating noise sampling to prove what's going on. Okay, that was one thing that, that they wanted, okay? Obviously, there'll be a noise study to, to, to look at that, okay? But in the current agreement, for example, it says from time to time, we could go up to 10 decibel on noise. And I can't in my own mind come up with anything that would do that if we do it right. Okay, now, right now, at Norm Bosio's house, it gets as high as eight at night. That's, that's, there's no margin there. So there's got to be some engineering that, that goes in that. So anyway, noise study, and I just found out today that the board of health is the idling enforcement. Okay, and I just found that out, so I'll, I'll be talking more about that. But when you talk about five minute idling, you, you got to say that the mass law that articulates five minute idling is going to be followed. My problem is I don't know how the hell you enforce it other than the operating tenant who manages the facility and the owner who holds them accountable. Put another way, I go up to Lovin occasionally and I go into that little parking lot that says, no more than five minutes idling. I have yet to see anybody come in and see whether I'm idling or not. Okay, the other biggie was the bonding. It went from 3 million after a lot of discussion in the original planning board. Barbara McCuskey and you talked about it and you brought up a very good point. If the town does it, we go to prevailing rates and that number goes up like crazy. Okay, so somewhere above 1 to 3 million is the right number. And I'll just double it right from the get go, okay? Now, if Rhino prevails at town meeting, go ahead.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I know, I don't know, but I would strongly assume that that's not something that the board of selectmen is going to take suggestion on. That's, that's a business decision that they're going to make. I, I want you to, all the other things you said, that's what I want to hear. The sound, your concerns about your effect to your, you on, as in a butter. And, and again, I'm not trying to discard you. It's on the record, it's being filmed right now.
But except to say, except to say that when the question was asked, it did, does Rhino have to clean up the property? And I heard Mr. Olson's answer, I heard Tyler's answer, but I heard two answers that night. I heard an answer from Tyler and I heard an answer from Amy. And I thought Amy said yes, but there was no other discussion. So I avoided all the talking when the question was asked.
Within the development agreement, they have to clean up the property. Tyler's answer was, as it sits now, I believe, I don't have to clean it up until, it's not his mess. So he's not forced to, but once they commence construction, have a permit, development agreement kicks in and they have to.
Okay. If, I guess the point I'm making is that bonding number, the business decision and the selectmen have to decide, it's an important thing because it's the one thing that stopped development of that property, getting the freaking buildings down. If I owned it, the first thing you have to do is demolish the buildings, do some site prep, and then you call the developers in and say, okay, how are we going to make money? Now, I don't happen to have $10 million either, but the point of the matter is that bonding says whether we're going to continue with the white elephant or not. So I, I come back and say the minimum bonding is to get the asbestos that's friable the hell out of there and the condemned building down. Maybe not all the buildings. Because what I've heard, what I've heard is that there's airborne asbestos now and that goes from a health hazard to a health emergency. So I don't know what the truth is. I have not toured the buildings. All I know is that when you cross that threshold of having a condemned building that first responders can't go into and you talk about asbestos abatement, you got to have enough money so that if for some reason Rhino can't sell it, they go bankrupt, then we're sitting there with no protection and status quo again. And, and I think that bonding is absolutely critical.
So go punch through this like bullet points, Dick.
Say again?
Go through this like it's bullet points and get us all your points right out there for the record.
Yep, I think there should be a hotline to record complaints that are noise and idling engines related to the operation of the site. So I don't have to buy a infrared drone and monitor that myself. I think there should be 12 to 14 mature evergreens instead of the landscape plan that's there. And the reason I say that is because when those trees came down, the, the Lakeville Hospital, which I never saw before, I can suddenly see.
That's going to be a site plan review thing.
Thank you.
We're going to pick that up. Amy has language in this development agreement so that the planning board at site plan review has the ability to make amendments to the, the development agreement based on site plan review.
Okay.
Is that accurate, Amy? Generally speaking?
Yes, the, um, the, um, any requirement of the planning board's site plan review shall be incorporated into this agreement.
Okay. Lights will be endeavored to be shut off on the Rush Pond roadside. It should be, will be dimmed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, may I just ask for some clarification? So it will be as in, so if this is a signed document by the select board and the developer prior to town meeting and there's a voight, vote after the fact and it comes to us as a site plan review, how then is it added back into a document that's already been signed? I'm just curious.
It, it gets incorporated. It's specifically incorporated and there's, by signing that, they agree that it's going to be incorporated.
The approval of site plan review is a condition of the development agreement. So that triggers whatever we decide in site plan review to become part of the development agreement by, by its nature of being referenced in it now.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Rhino will endeavor to use, um, ambient sensing backup alarms for all trucks, uh, that they own. Well, it's going to be operated by tenants. Rhino may not own any trucks. Okay, so it should be, Rhino will assure that all trucks that are owned, leased or otherwise under the control of the tenants that Rhino leases it to. Okay, and that goes back to something that was promised during our site plan review. And Tyler said that we will require our tenants to have a noise mitigation and management plan. Okay, and that comes back to, I don't care how well you engineer it, you still are depending on the operating management to enforce the rules that we've all agreed to and maintain that equipment in proper operating condition. So that is an absolute must. Okay, it, it, it didn't ever get in there, but those kinds of things were in the MIPA. those kinds of things were in the MEPA and we haven't really linked the MEPA back to the permitting and the site plan review, et cetera. And it's a biggie because Rhino made very, very um, many commitments that, uh, in the MEPA process. And it never made it to the, uh, the guiding documents and I've covered everything on my list.
Thank you, Dick. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I may. Um, so I did go through and compare the previous special permit conditions to what we have proposed. And there are a number of items that were removed because they did refer to a special permit. I did highlight a few that I do wanna see included personally. From the original one, A-12, it does refer to the special permit, uh, but it also says that the applicant or successor shall reevaluate project impacts, including but not limited to noise, traffic, stormwater, et cetera, and meet with the board once a tenant is selected for a facility in that, in the event that. I don't wanna read all of them, but so A-12, I would like to see A-12 incorporated back in. Um, there's a number of, um, that. Oh, here's A-21, it refers to what Mr. Scott was saying about the MEPA process. Um, so perhaps even though the MEPA process is no longer part of the special permit here, uh, we could incorporate something that includes those MEPA recommendations uh, from A-21. And, um, B, which had to do with noise, oh no. Sorry. C, having to do with noise. Um, C-1 was a big one. Um, talked about post-construction levels, sound man, uh, sound level management. Uh, that was removed. I'd like to see C-1. C-4, which also refers to mechanical rooftop units, shall be limited to three. Um, and that the sound, they had to be consistent with the sound study. So that's C-1, C-4, also C-5, about if the tenant requires refrigeration equipment or trucks, um, it will be required to resubmit to the planning board.
So we, on C-3, they're actually prohibited. So, so we took out that they could come back to the planning board?
Right. So on the C-3, as it stands now, it just refers to refrigerated trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that one was C-6. So we had C-1, C-4, and C-5 in addition to C-6. So there was just some additional.
So what does C-5 say on that?
C-5 says if the tenant requires refrigeration equipment or trucks, so not just trucks, so, okay.
I think, I think she's talking about cold storage within the building, which I think Tyler agreed that they didn't wanna really build cold storage anyway, so.
Yeah, for me, that's true. Okay, the whole thing, if this goes from dry storage warehouse to refrigerated and then like right up against a residential zone, that I have a very big problem.
Well, I just think the, the whole Cisco thing was, that was a big issue with it and we felt that that should stay.
With Cisco was they put those in the buffer zone right across the house.
Yeah.
So C-4, C-5, also, um, C-9, which was about future tenants with the sound mitigation management, uh, plan. That should be included as well. Um, and then landscape and lighting. Uh, there were a number of landscape items. I know we could cover these in site plan review. I would prefer to have them included now so we don't have to remember to include these once again when we go through it.
Well, some of them I think would be plan-specific now.
Well, so we've seen the conceptual designs and.
Yeah, but they're gonna have to do all the new peer review and everything. So I, I don't think it'd be a problem for us to bring the special permit to site plan review just as a checklist to go back through.
Okay.
So I, I'm not trying to overload this thing. I understand we want to cover everything, but we start talking about landscape. That's definitely gonna be looked at at that time. And if it's sound-related, I think that the acoustic fence would be more effective, that's been proven with the sound study stuff than a tree.
Well, I mean, we left some of the landscape items in, but then took some out. So I think, you know, a lot of that visual appeal that we were, we had from that landscaping plan, I don't know if they're gonna go through the extensive landscaping, uh, development that they went through originally.
You created the architect already, right?
But it's, it's back to performance standards, Mark. In other words, the purpose of the landscape is to meet certain performance standards, which need to be articulated, okay?
Yeah.
And then you go ahead and evaluate what the landscape plan is, did we achieve those performance standards? Now, the judge said we're not entitled to visibility, but we certainly are entitled to, as it relates to the other ones that we were agreed on. So you have to, you have to balance where you're spending your money, but you have to achieve the objectives. And I keep coming back to, I don't favor a warehouse over there, okay? But if one goes in, you have to think of all the things that you can do to make it livable so that the people, this guy right here is at ground zero.
I know. I remember all that.
So, Mr. Chairman, that, that's actually the, the reason why all of that should be done in site plan review. So Mr. Scott can have the plan in front of him and he can say, this is not enough. This is not gonna be enough because of this or this, and we need to do this. So I, I think having it in the development agreement is not going to satisfy the residents because he.
Except for these 12 to 14-foot trees, I've already calculated that that, that's probably gonna be okay. Whereas that's not what's in the landscape plan right now.
So, so yeah, so I think that having a final plan before the, before the board for site plan review is the way to address all of these, all of these things with landscaping. I'm just purely talking about the landscaping right now. Because for 12 to 14 mature trees, we would wanna know where exactly they should be. So that's, that's why, that's why site plan.
Need to be picked up by site plan review, Dick. Uh, you, you're not gonna skip on us, you're gonna go.
Just, just, let's remember, our, our team lost somebody to death recently, okay? So we're all mortal, okay? And zoning is our only protection. Site plan, plan review is to me an overlay to see if we missed anything. I, I feel that the zoning is what protects people, okay? And that's why I'm concerned at using the mixed-use method. But I recognize how the process works. And, uh, I feel like the committee is working better and I certainly feel like the proponent is reaching out to people. I think those are all very, very positive things. But during the COVID, we didn't have any of that dialogue. None of it.
Yeah, it stunk.
Well, I'm wearing masks now because the health agent said I had to.
No, what I'm just saying, the, the process, I don't, I don't, I'm not a computer guy. I would have rather have been here for all of that, you know? But anyway, let's continue on, please.
All right, so those, I mean, if we're gonna cover all the landscaping items, you know, site plan review, then it would be those, uh, six items that I named, the A-12, A-21, C-1, C-4, C-5, and C-9 that I would like to see incorporated back in.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to add to that. I think, um, Jill and I are pretty close on things. I do have to re, uh, agree with what Mr. Scott said, though. On going from the 3 million to 1 million, I understand you're saying we probably have a little play in that, uh, but I disagree with it. On B-10, let me make sure Kathy, it's the same number from last year. Uh, solid waste disposal. I don't know why we cut that back so dramatically and I'd like to see the solid waste disposal uh, from, um, the original agreement put back into, uh, what we're working on now.
It's my recollection that was, um, that was cut back because of that. I think that that originally referred to basins, stormwater basins. It was projects, it was project-specific.
Solid waste disposable area and all associate pollutants associated with the solid waste disposable area will be completely removed prior to the construction of infiltration basin one. Removal solid waste disposal area will be observed by a licensed site professional, uh, engineer. The removal of the SWDA that impacts the wetlands to be inspected by a professional wetland scientist.
Right, so we don't know if there's going to be, where that, where that infiltration basin is going to be.
So you're saying we pick that up in site plan?
Um.
Well, I think that.
I guess, well, you know what, I, I guess it could go back in, Nora.
Yeah, I'm just concerned we reduced it to one sentence.
They're gonna have to have, they'll have to have an infiltration basin, we just don't know where it is.
Right.
But I think the, the point of that in there is we've been told that they're gonna clean up the site. It should just be in there that they are cleaning up the solid waste disposal area.
And I know we're not talking specific to the landscaping. Uh, the only one that I think makes sense to, to keep in is D-9. And it's talking in very generalities about the, uh, maintenance plan. It's not specific to, um, what type of landscaping, but the, the maintenance plan. Uh, and I forget who brought this up earlier, but somewhere in here we need to add something about the trailer dropping. Probably would be in section F under operations. And that's all I have.
You good?
Uh, actually, um, I, I think Nora has a good point about the expanded, um, I, I do tend to agree with the expanded paragraph about the solid waste cleanup. And you said it's not a big deal to go back to the original, so I, I think maybe going back to the original might, might be better. I, I understand why they did it, but other than that, everybody's hit on, um, and I, I do think this will be a very, um, in-depth site plan review that'll catch a lot of, um, the stuff that we haven't even thought of yet. So I'm okay with it overall, ready.
Can I speak from my seat?
Speak loud and clear then.
Okay, thank you. So in, in the new plan, there's a point G3 that Ray reads in part, in perpetuity, Rhino should perform annual maintenance to the project's stormwater management and operations and maintenance plan. In perpetuity until they, at some point, if they should decide to sell the property, is, is what that means, right?
Well, that's pretty standard practice of any commercial property that owner or tenant manages their stormwater.
In the old, uh, agreement, there was a point G2 that said specifically, this special permit shall apply to all successors in control or excessive, successors in interest of the property prescribed in the special permit application and accompanying plans. Why wouldn't we keep that in the law?
That was, uh, transferable?
Under F, um, under F, it says that the terms of the agreement shall be binding on parties, their respective successors, heirs, assigns in any assignee or Rhino.
Oh, it's in there, just someplace else.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
Go right ahead, John.
Um, can you all, one, one clarification? You said that any condition included in our site plan review package is therefore, or a site plan approval is incorporated within this development agreement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I wanna go back on what Peter said, that there will be an in-depth site plan review package that will go along with this site plan approval that will go along with this project. So any conditions that the board sees fit when a further developed plan comes forth will therefore be included within this agreement that we have executed here. So in essence, this agreement functions as a special permit in sorts.
It will function as the special permit that was, yeah, that was granted before.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that that, that point is made clear, that site plan approval conditions will be included within a contractual agreement between the developer, Rhino Capital, our successors and interests, and the town.
Yes.
Andrew, is it Mr. Max? Just go back for one second. Okay, so with the board, I'll, I'll rephrase it. Could at town meeting, could there be an amendment that would say, um, that this article would have a special permit as part of site plan review? In other words.
I, I'm not sure because I know certain amendments like that, if they dramatically change the intent of the bylaw or the zoning change, they wouldn't be allowed. Is that accurate?
I, I think that that would be out of the scope because that's what it is now.
Right.
Right now, it requires special permit and site plan review. So the purpose of the article is to, to change what's required. So I think that would be out of the scope because you, you would just vote no. And you, that would be what it was.
Carry that thought a little bit further about what's allowed at town meeting. The only reason I'm saying it is because depending on what finally goes for a vote, there may be a proposed amendment, okay? And I can offer, uh, one, which I just did, which was the, um, special permit being part of the article, but for example, operating hours. Right now, Rhino has said they must go 24/7. Could you have a, uh, bylaw that stipulates that the operating hours, uh, are, for the sake of argument, uh, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM? I mean, I've been, I've been scolded by, uh, Rick, Rich, the chairman, saying that I should have a lawyer for anything that I, you know, do that has to do with the town. And so far, I've spent over 20 grand on lawyers, but I guess the point I'm making is I, I can think of several potential amendments that could be put forward. And I'm just, I'm just wondering, should I run it by a lawyer now and then just decide which ones, which amendments I wanna consider?
Well, I guess.
Okay.
Probably. Uh, all right, so I'd like to wrap up.
Mark, can I just ask one clarification question?
Go right ahead, Nora.
Because I, I believe I heard you say that we'll propose these changes to the select board. They may or may not go along with them. However, tying in with what was just said about site plan and review, that if it's not adopted here by the select board, it could in fact still be adopted if we address it in site plan.
As long as it's a discipline that's reviewed by site plan review.
Right, right.
You, I don't think you could make a stipulation on site plan review on something. You, you're looking at site plan, you're not looking at hours of operation, for example.
No, understood, I wasn't thinking hours of operations.
Clarifying for what you said, so yes, if something wasn't agreed upon, they felt there's too much language and take out all the landscape stuff, would have to do it again and it would be allowed at site plan review.
Okay, nice.
All right, so I'd like to, uh, close this discussion and make a recommendation to send this, uh, language for these additions to the development agreement to the board of selectmen for earnest consideration to add to the development agreement.
Second.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, so back to public hearing number four. At this time, I would like to make a motion to close the hearing and uh, make a recommendation to approve the zoning bylaw changes and on town meeting four.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Not without a special permit.
Okay, so motion carries for the majority. Michelle is opposed. So, moving along. The quiet guy. We have a continued site plan review for 310 Kenneth Wells Drive.
Don't you have more? Do you have any more zoning articles?
No. We had some.
The signs, 11?
No, we already did those.
Oh.
We did those at our last meeting we're meeting. Come on up. Your turn. Dick, I don't wanna keep you all night. We probably won't do much longer, but I'd like to just have a few words with you after the meeting. So, for the record, if you could reintroduce and just give a brief summary of why you're here?
Sure, I'm James Russell. I'm representing the owners for 310 Kenneth Wells Drive. And we're here to seek pretty much an agreement on the proposed site plan changes for that property. So back in May, when we originally presented the scheme to the city, the recommendation came that we should seek a zoning change to increase the lot coverage. So over the summer, we did that. We got approval. I believe, Kathy, you may have the document for me? So it's been signed off. The site coverage has been increased to 77% from 70%. And along with that, we were able to accommodate 250-car parking on the existing site. So right now, we would like to proceed and move forward with the final engineering for this plan, and I'd like your blessing on that.
Okay, so just for the record, back when this building was originally built, lot coverage was at 80%. It was allowed by right back when, it's about 35 years ago now, when the Lakefield Development Corporation, or whatever it was called, developed and made the covenants for the industrial park. So they've provided us a plan to rectify the parking issues. They've received the relief from the zoning board of appeals to deal with the lot coverage issues. This plan does not, it's not a final plan. He's just asking if we generally like this plan, that we're not gonna say, change all the parking around again. He'd like to then go spend money on stormwater design. They're gonna have to go through the conservation commission. So they don't wanna spend more money doing those disciplines before they get at least positive feedback from us tonight. So this is not a formal approval of this. Generally looking, so we don't wanna walk back on what we say tonight. But they're still gonna come back with full drainage. If you notice, there's no catch basins. They'll have to design retention ponds. Probably have a little bit of a wetland issue. So generally, I'll go through the board.
So I know they, we had talked about their building in the wetlands, and they're gonna have to do some wetland replication. It kinda looks like the parking lot is now extending into the area where he said they could do wetland replication. I know that's not planning board, but is that still, you still have area for that?
They'll have to do that somehow.
We have Goddard Consultants at work to take care of the conservation commission and the wetland remediation work. So replication work, excuse me.
Replication. And so I did ask at the last meeting that we have with you, is there any documentation that you can show that there is 250 employees at the max at any given time? Because I know from what we had seen for the request for water allocation, it actually showed 150 for Northeast Alternatives and also 150 for Juicy. No mention of how many employees work in that middle section area. And so that would look like we would need 300 spots. So I'm still seeing the 250 spots.
So we know each of those facilities have shifts. So if you divide that in half, you wouldn't have more than 200 or 250 cars on the site at any time, even during a harvest. And that's already been documented with information that the owner has provided.
So they have updated it from the 300?
It's basically 250 is the maximum.
If it's 300 total employees?
That's it, but it did state at any given time, like, at the same time. That did, it did, it didn't say, you know, shift change.
What I am told from the owner is that there are 125 per tenant in those spaces.
And we don't know how many
Maximum.
For the middle portion either, that other?
I believe that's being taken over by Northeast Alternatives. Is my understanding. Is that the seafood refrigerated company?
I can't think of what it's called.
Sea trade?
Sea trade, thank you.
So keep in mind, this is better than what they have.
True, but I still see
Hopefully it resolves all the issues, whether or not they hire more people. And they are, you're proposing a guardrail on the other side of the road to stop the off-site parking.
We are either a guardrail or perhaps boulders.
Yep.
That seems to be what is the trend in the neighborhood.
Well, you guys had nice little granite monuments.
Yes, we did.
On that property there, so.
We'll work with
We certainly would be open to some sort of a deterrent.
Yeah.
We will work with you on what the proper deterrent should be. But right now, I think we are looking at just a low timber deterrent that would prevent anyone from parking on that land.
So I will say that I'm generally satisfied. We will end up doing a peer review on the stormwater once you get us that information.
Yes, it's understood.
But I'm satisfied that they can move forward. Peter?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yep.
Jack?
Yes.
You okay with it, Michelle?
I just think a business needs to provide parking for their employees, and I just, I
Well, they're trying.
I know they're trying, but I feel like they've run out of room.
Well, there's gonna make more room, and hopefully it satisfies what we see, because it's... How many spaces do you have currently? With what it exists right now on the site with the temporary parking?
I think he said they were adding 40. And I see 40 over there on the other side of the road.
We added 40 from the previous scheme.
But the previous scheme is not all built up yet?
No. So if you don't mind, I can do some quick addition.
Started with 70 overall. 30 and 40, respectively. But I could be wrong. We had that number somewhere.
It seems like the trend is about 35 cars get parked across the street currently.
Yeah, and, I mean, within the parking area, there's plenty of parking, you know? No, but no, actually, I see more people still parking not on pavement. They're on the grass, they're on, you know, all these other areas.
There's a temporary parking area, too, that they're trying to utilize and
It just doesn't seem like they have enough parking for their employees.
Well, I understand, but this is more, what they're proposing is more than they currently have. So I hope that it resolves the issue, but, Pete, what do you got?
It's around 153. It includes the ADA parking, so
That's what you'll end up with, or that's what you're adding?
No, we have 153 currently from the drawing that we submitted has a parking town, so it has existing parking, proposed parking. There's some relocated parking. So when you add it all up, it's about 153 existing spaces. We're increasing it to 250.
Right, so you're gonna gain about 97 spaces or any?
Well, we're also adding accessible parking as well, so it's nine spaces. So total, including accessible parking, is 259.
Okay.
So we're going from 153 to 259. And we are also not in the floodplain. That was also a very important consideration, that we avoid the floodplain.
Okay, good. So I would say you have our support to move forward with this plan. And, you know, we won't walk that back. We're saying it on the record. So I'd love to get you back as soon as you can with the stormwater report and get the conservation.
Okay.
So we can get you going over there.
It might not be for a while, but, you know, all the contracts are in place. We just have to pull the trigger from our end. So thank you for your time and your suggestions.
You're welcome. Sorry it took so long tonight, but we were doing town business as well, so.
Well, you know, that's important. And it's important that everyone have a voice in their local government, so it's good to see people come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So
Oh, I know. The red, what's it called, the red?
We should have been here.
I guess not.
Okay.
I mean, it's not on the agenda. I did see something.
Yeah, it came in the bag.
Kathy, so I'm gonna lean on you. Any correspondence you wanna talk about? Good, good. So I already mentioned our next meeting, September, I'm sorry, November 10th 7:00 PM here. We approved the minutes. No other business before the board, so I'd make a motion to adjourn. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.